You're all set.
Thanks, Lauren. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call or order the Unirental School Project Building Committee, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. It is five fifteen. Lauren, could you do the roll call for us, please?
Yeah. Chairman Woods?
I'm sorry.
Chairman Woods?
Here.
Dr. Fletcher?
Here.
Carol Duggan?
Here.
Amy Parati?
Here. Thank you.
Jeremy Wetzel?
Here.
And Councilor Rada?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have a call on. We're good. Public participation is next. And I think we have no one from the public.
Correct.
Take action on prior meeting minutes. We have one. The meeting of June first, twenty twenty-three. I entertain a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Fletcher in a second. Bye.
Kim.
Kim. Thank you, Kim. Questions, comments? All those in favor signify by saying hi.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Take action on potential change orders. We have two, correct?
We have two.
Yeah, you're gonna do those, right, right?
Yep. So PCO thirty-five. No, thirty-five is for the retaining wall. That was a negotiated change credit for ten thousand dollars. That includes addressing some of the issues that we've had from field reports from the architect as well as the structural engineer for how the wall turned out as far as the the QA QC work on it and the substitution of the panels that give it that would bring a look onto the side face. So that there's negotiated change that we agreed upon for the ten thousand dollars. And PCO one eighteen is for RFI one fifty-one for south side of the B wing, D wing connector. We're doing these in the phase right now, covered after demo of the old hollow metal doors and window system that was in there that the contract drawing details did not match with what was actually in place out here. So there was some masonry work as well as steelwork involved in providing a proper opening for the aluminum because the aluminum openings have a smaller profile than the previously installed hollow metal. So we had to create an infill of that cavity for the new system to work in. That was just the architect's drawings had been based off of what was provided to them and the what was actually installed in the field. I believe that was part of the addition work on that in two thousand different from what was on the the drawings. So there is a change to the contractors to make that work.
Anybody have any questions on these two? Yes, Amy.
Um, yeah, for the retaining wall, um, are we i- is anything gonna change with the way it looks right now?
Just.
Or we're just getting ten thousand dollar credit?
We're getting ten thousand dollar credit. And I mean, structurally, it's sound, but the panels, the decorative panel that was supposed to work just didn't work out as well as we thought. So we're we're stuck with what we have. If we have money left over before the project is over, we could possibly face the wall with stone.
Okay, cuz um, I was there like end of school and it just, I don't know, it just doesn't look good at all still. So I know that and I'm glad we're getting the credit for it, but I wish that we could do something to make it look better, like right in the front of the school.
Remember, it gets a lot smaller once the grading is done and complete. There's almost, oh, I think it's almost eighteen inches on parts of that wall get covered. So it's not gonna be sticking out of the ground.
Okay, we can we can look back at it after then.
Okay.
Thanks.
No.
There will be a fence also put on it. There's a couple of um, other construction things that haven't been done in addition to the grade. So that may sorry, I mean, that won't change the finish on the front, of course, that that you're concerned about, but there are things like um, it's it's like a black ornamental type fence that goes on the top and
So take your eye off the wall, you know, you'll be drawn to something else.
Is that gonna be done like this summer? Is that like at like next year-ish? Like, when's that fence going up?
The sidewalk that goes in front of it will be going in this summer. We do have at the cafeteria, there's a new free cast metal panel. Our facing plan right now has that going through October. We need to clean that fence out till that dairy wall is finished so that our boom lifts can still operate from that area. Will will go this summer, but word of say is it should be October. Kitchen turns back over.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I entertain a motion that we approve PCOs thirty-five and one eighteen for a negative amount of five thousand eleven dollars and fifty-two cents credited back to the project.
Steve is my mate?
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jeremy.
No, just it just the question, the credit, how much of the the bill did that credit of ten thousand account for, you know, for that particular project? How much did we get back on that for the error?
I'd have to look back. I don't have that off the top of my head. I'd have to go to the the contractor had a schedule of va- schedule of values which um, assigned a certain cost for that retaining wall. Rich, if you happen to know it quicker than I could find it.
I believe that that would have had it work for the basin.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. I don't know for the.
Yeah, Rich is breaking up.
I'm just curious, was it was it? Did we get half of it back? Did we? You know, if it's if asked, if we're kind of stuck with it, I'd hope that the the discount was significant, I suppose, you know, or decent. I mean, I wouldn't want it for free, certainly, but.
Right. I don't.
I would guess it's probably more like ten percent, ten or twelve percent. That would be a guess on my end, because structurally, there's nothing wrong with it. It's purely cosmetic. Actually, I think it's gonna improve a little bit with age. And it also is gonna look better once our finishes are done, because it's gonna be a lot shorter in height. It's not gonna be anywhere near as noticeable. Are you trying to look that number up, Rich?
Um, I'm trying to make my sound better right now.
Oh.
Yeah, um. I think if I'm looking at the right line item, it may have been uh, for that whole thing that wraps around the loading dock, too, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's a it's a big item.
Yes, we have to break it apart to the actual piece that runs parallel.
Right.
So.
That that probably includes some of the, I think the fencing is in that. I think there's there's parts that are in that line item that I don't have a breakout for right now.
Jeremy, uh, do you wanna hold off on this until we can get that? Or let's get a closer estimate? You're not comfortable moving forward?
Well, I I think the credit's good, certainly. Um, I I'd move forward if the rest of the committee would love to or like to. Um, but I just, I do think that if it's, this is a quarter million dollar wall and we're kind of stuck with what it looks like, uh, because I've heard other people say kind of similarly you know, similar similar things according to what, you know, to back Amy up here. So um, I just wanna make sure that you know, th- this is a, I mean, I don't know if ten thousand back is a good value for 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 that, or if it's like a good number, you know, should we be getting more? Should we be looking at twenty-five or twenty? I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think we could characterize it as a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar wall, because it does wraps all the way around, almost ties back into the building uh, into the cafeteria. So it's the whole loading dock, the stairs for the loading dock, you know, the fence that goes on top of it. So if you looked at just, you know, the the retaining wall that we're that we're really talking about that has the decorative or was supposed to have a decorative panel, we ended up with a semi decorative panel. I I would think the value of that wall somewhere only around a hundred grand. So this is roughly ten percent. We got back um, credit for uh, the panels that they were supposed to buy, which was five thousand dollars and an additional five thousand dollars, um, because the finish didn't come out as good as we anticipated. But again, structurally, it's sound.
Okay, so so at least we're getting some kind of, at least a little bit back on this, um, you know, if we're stuck with it, it sounds.
And I mean, this wasn't willing either. This was, there was a lot of um, back and forth on this before we got to ten thousand dollars. Kim, you had a question?
Well, yeah, I I tend to agree with um the the question that Jeremy was raising, and I'm wondering how much of problem it would cause if we tabled um the approval on the retaining wall until we get a little bit more information, um, more 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 of a of a of a hard number to know what it is that the cost of that particular facing would be in terms, and then what we're, what the percentage is that we're getting back on it.
Okay, so how about we just move then? Um, I'll move that we we make a motion. I'm gonna make a motion to accept change order, PCO one eighteen, an amount of four thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, and we'll table the retaining wall credit until um, Newfield and uh um, CGS can get us a more accurate number to see what that ten thousand dollars reflects. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Then the next item is take action on invoices. We have a bunch. So we have some CSGs. Monthly invoice, Myers, which is the moving company. IES, I believe this is testing lab?
A commissioning agent.
Commissioning agent.
Yeah.
KB, obviously our architect. Tri-State is our testing lab.
Yeah.
And then Lightspeed Tech, I believe that's an FFD, right?
So, yeah, technology, the the ceiling audio equipment, yeah.
Oh, technology, not furniture, not that's definitely. So I entertain a motion that we approve um these invoices in the amount of eighty-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and nine cents um, for payment. Someone can move that.
So moved.
Thank you, Amy, in a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Fletcher. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Financial.
Thank you.
Oh, you're leaving, Lauren?
Yeah.
Okay. Have a good night.
Thanks, you too.
Eileen, are you gonna give us a financial update?
Yes, I am. All right. So as we just went over the invoices. Yeah, I don't think I can move this over a little.
You have to move off.
These people.
Yeah, there you go.
Got it. So we just had um, another KBA invoice that was on here. The owner's rep invoice for CSG. So you can see we're still what's paid, or I'm sorry. The project budget and amount, and then the what's paid to date, the balance that's left. So we're still doing very well here. The, this one is closed out, the hazardous testing, but we still have a lot to go. So you'll see a lot of bills for the hazardous uh, material testing, because we're currently going through abatement. So you will see invoices for that probably in July and August. And then we're starting up all the summer work uh, for materials, testing and inspections. So there'll be uh, compaction testing in concrete, steel, et cetera, with the uh, special I'm sorry, with the materials testing. And then we also have Alan, who's our special inspections coordinator, who comes out and looks at at the steel. Our commissioning agent has been out. He was supposed to be out there again today, looking at the equipment for this last phase. So we're still doing well. Our soft cross, we had um, we're definitely going to have some uh, moving and storage costs coming up next month, because we just went through the summer move and our monitoring agent is out there for the stormwater uh, ENS control. And then we had some invoices for furniture and technology come through. And then we're still doing well on the owner contingency tracking. We have a million one oh one left. And then there are some pending PCOs. But we are tracking on budget, and I did send this out to anyone, everyone, sorry. Does anyone have any specific questions?
Any questions for Eileen? Okay, move on. I'll see my hand going up.
Thanks.
Jennifer, architects update? You're starting to gear up again, huh? A lot of work going on out there now.
There is.
No, you're muted, Jennifer. Hold the spacebar down if you can't get it off. That works. At least it should work. No, not work. There you go.
Okay, did that work?
That works.
I had so many windows open, I couldn't find it again. Sorry about that. Um, well, Rich will share all the the major activity going on there. There is a lot, and the summer is gonna be very busy. But as far as design team activity, um, the same thing, we've been pretty much presenting to you, the the RFIs, um, there's weekly meetings, weekly site visits. Um, there's been, of course, furniture coordination with making sure that the orders are going to be um, timely, that you'll get your deliveries when needed. And uh, potential change orders are still being reviewed, of course, and uh, recently, we had the application for payment, which I think is on your agenda for tonight. So the the two PCOs uh, were reviewed, and we had recommended those for your approval. I know the one is tabled, so we'll help with um, getting you some information on you know, breakdown and and stuff on the retaining wall. And the application for payment um, was reviewed and recommended for payment. And that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Jennifer? Okay, Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you.
Eileen, owners, projects, manager update?
All right. Yes, so I just wanted to um, also say that uh, we reviewed the potential change orders, and uh, I know we're not taking action on the wall right now, but we did review it and approved it. Uh, we will get you uh, what you're looking for, the percentage for the retaining wall. And also for the construction management uh, payment application, we also approve pay application number twelve. So this summer activities, we started uh, really strong this week. We moved the school out Tuesday. A lot of the items went to the bus garage, so that was a kitchen, gym area, everything that was in the cafeteria. And then on Wednesday, we relocated everything through the school. So I just wanna say thank you to all the staff and for maintenance. Appreciate all their help and uh, ac- actually Jason Smith and Jason Plum as well. I'm not sure if Lou is on the call, but he attends the meetings. So anyway, uh, we are definitely starting hot and heavy into construction. It's it's going strong. Demo and and abatement are are happening, so I'll let Rich fill you in. But we are busy. Thank you.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Eileen? Go ahead, Rich. Great, you guys see the pictures of our new floors in the B wing.
So um, yeah, we'll start out here with um, the what we have going on over viewing, like Steve just said. Um, part of the new floors that we have for this relates back to a change order from a month or so, a couple of months ago now. This renatec's mat system uh, that we put down, so in the classroom, or actually, the uh, I believe it's the interventionist room. You see on the right side of that picture that um, has the floor topping in it already. This mat was put down. We've since poured this area. This was a photo from last week, so this is a mat that'll actually float and reinforce the floor topping, so that kind of uh, creates its own little uh, slab that the flooring will go on top of. So this system goes down first. Um, here you can see it running down the hallway as well. So we we broke out the B wing into roughly three areas, one about half the size, and the other two about quarter of the size of the the full area. Kind of phasing the flooring guy around, because he does block all the other trades out of those rooms. So we have to phase him around, so we still had our access doors in and out. So um, we did that. The last four was completed, so they're uh getting everything out now. The this is the result of that. The end result is uh, floor topping, flat and level, self leveller involved in it. So uh, none of the crack, the cracks that are in the existing slab um, would be able to radiate through this slab. After a twenty-four hour period, we're able to get back on top of it. So our trades are flip, were for the past couple of weeks, flip flopping back and forth over which areas they were uh, were able to work. So carpenters will be able to get back into these areas now, get the drywall up. Uh, then continue with taping and soffit activities in these areas, getting ready for the painter painters uh, penciled in for next week to come out and start prime and first coat on some of these walls here. The west side, which is the outside of the building, as opposed to the courtyard side, uh, this couple of weeks. Uh, when you look at the activity wise, a couple of weeks behind, based on the floor topping, not not necessarily behind the overall schedule, just behind what the courtyard side is. So carpenters are working, taping, finishing up in there, getting ready for the painter, and then flip flopping back over to the west side after that floor topping is completed this week to finish everything else out in these areas. Eileen had mentioned, we have started a lot of the work over in the uh, phase three. Phase three is the main lobby. Uh, the music room, the stage area, the uh, cafeteria. So we've gone, um, I I actually just checked our daily log from uh, today. In the past couple of weeks, we've been running a crew of twenty-five to thirty guys with B wing. Um, today's manpower count was up to seventy-five. So we've gotten, in the past couple of days, uh, almost tripled our manpower on site. We do have the demo crews working. We have all the uh, can work continuing in the B wing. And we also have our site work going on as well. So you can see here, they've ripped uh, any, they're doing a lot of the clean demo, getting ready for the prep of the PCB paint removals and any asbestos removals we need to do. Our heaviest act area right now is the lobby, the cafeteria, and that corridor in the music room, because those areas do turn back over. Right around mid-August, August fourteenth or so for the furniture. So we're on a tight uh, two-month schedule here for demo and rebuild of these areas. So we're getting a jumpstart on it as quickly as we can. So demo guy is hitting it hard for uh, about a week or so to get a lot of his stuff done in this area, so we can get our other trades back in and start building out, um, so we can hit the turnover date uh, towards the middle to end of August, when all the kids are coming back. So additional photos here. The wall paneling obviously is removed, uh, getting ready for the the clean demo to uh, or sorry, the abatement work to uh, continue. Here you can see this is behind the stage, this uh, temp ceiling that we had put in last summer, after the pipe abatement was done, is back out, and the demo above is occurring so that we can get our roof reinforcement steel in. Uh, we've been coordinating that uh, the past few weeks with the structural steel, the mason, and the demo contractor to uh, get that work installed. The kitchen here, you can see we've taken a between our disconnects of the equipment, uh, the town is storing some of the kitchen serving line equipment and refrigerators for use as a temp serving line for the months of September and October. The kitchen stays under construction through uh, October twenty-fifth time. And uh, we also keep the stage until that time as well. And uh, so because of that, we have been working with the town and the school to work on a uh, supplying them with some power so that they can create a temp serving line in the cafeteria to feed the students. And you can see also here as the outside shot, this is the ENF wing on the left side. Um, the parking lot uh, is starting with the the demolition. Uh, we have a retention system to go in here underneath this parking lot. So this summer, this area will all get removed. A lot of the sidewalks are going in at the front of the building, uh, the area that last year we put the retaining wall and the first coat of asphalt down. We're gonna be back in those areas doing uh, the hardscapes, doing the sidewalk and some landscaping in there as well. And working that to tie it back into uh, what we're doing in the lower lot this summer, which is that retention system, some uh storm lines and some sanitary lines going out. So we're gonna be working on that. That'll actually change the traffic flow pattern for uh, this the fall. When the kids come back, buses will have one loop and parent drop off will have a separate loop. So um, Reservoir Road and Fen Road will each now be two-way entrance and exits, as opposed to the one ways that they are right now. So a large part of that traffic pattern will will change in the next couple of months. We do have, our fence lines now are established. We put up a fence barrier that's going and blocking the path from the baseball fields, as well as the Reservoir Road and the Fen Road driveway aisles. Essentially surrounding the school right now with a barrier for construction. Uh, we do have signage going up as well, warning the public to stay out, being uh, that it's a construction area. Part of that, too, uh, we've coordinated with the head of security for the uh, Newington Public Schools for what i- areas of the building are still monitored, what uh, cameras he will have and which ones he is losing. So we do have some temporary provisions in place through Sonatrol is our security vendor, who's also the town's security vendor. So um, we're working with the with uh, with Mike directly to keep any of their systems they need operating. We also coordinated with the fire marshal, and uh, actually, while we were in this meeting, uh, my plumbing foreman came in, let me know they finished with the gas purge. So we have uh, capped the gas line outside of the gym. The gas line will be all reconfigured this summer uh, before uh, we open back up in the end of August. So they have capped the gas line after the gas meter and purged all the gas out of the building. So for that, we had to have all of our trades leave. So at So they have capped the gas line after the gas meter and purged all the gas out of the building, so for that, we had to have all of our trades leave, so at. Uh, three o'clock today, they began that gas purge, fire marshal had the purge plan ahead of time, he was aware of what we were doing. Um, and that, so I can say that was done successfully today, no issues, so. Um, we're gonna be big push in the next couple of months here to get a lot of this area turned back over for. Uh, the start of school and then a few areas that we keep until October, and then additional areas, including the gym, which are kept until the end of December. And uh. We'll kind of phase our way through this school and uh. Keep going with it. Any questions?
Thanks, Rich. Anyone have any questions for Rich? Yes, Carol.
It's not a question, it's just a comment, I think it's amazing what you have done in such a short amount of time, staff and. Just left on Tuesday, so thanks for all the great work, I, it's incredible.
I think we drove Eileen a little nuts, but we had a bunch of people running around her uh. Her movers trying to get everybody out, so there was a lot of coordination going on for for that couple day periods.
It's impressive.
Anyone else? All right, Rich, thank you. Uh, next item is any other business pertinent to the committee, we have one, which is Newfield's pay app number twelve. And the amount of eight fifty-nine, eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. So someone can move that motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Thank you. And a second by Amy. Any discussion on it, again, it's all been approved by the architects and our owners, project manager, signed off by. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. We're back to public participation, which again, I think we have none. Let me just double check. Yeah, none. Um, comments by members? Anyone? Motion to adjourn then.
Motion.
To make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Carol, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, we stand adjourned, everyone, at. Five forty-eight, thank you, everyone, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Night.